Pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Almighty and everlasting God who presides over all things in heaven and earth come and preside over these deliberations so that those that make the decisions may be guided by your wisdom.
Okay, being that we have, council has nothing on our agenda, we'll go right to the mayor's agenda, Charlie?
Just making sure the door is locked. Take care of that.
Watch your balance.
Good evening. There are a number of resolutions, most of which are LSA requests. The first item would be authorizing city administrator and/or engineering designee for the city of Wilkes-Barre to submit traffic signal maintenance agreement, to submit further modifications to this traffic signal maintenance agreement, and to submit further applications for traffic signal approval either in writing or via electronic signature to PennDOT and to sign this agreement on behalf of the city of Wilkes-Barre. This is PennDOT housekeeping, basically. They've changed to an internet signature process and they need various resolutions. There's also a light that's going to be going up on 3:15 where the new Starbucks is going to be done, so that sort of precipitated us having to sign this agreement.
We just had something on our agenda, if I'm not mistaken, a couple of months ago?
I think so, yeah, with the light.
Yeah, traffic light.
Right. Next is authorizing Mayor George C. Brown and City Controller Darren Snyder as the officials to execute all documents and agreements between the city of Wilkes-Barre and the Commonwealth Financing Authority to facilitate and assist in obtaining the requested Luzerne County Local Share Assessment grant of $500,000 to be used for the Solomon Creek Wall Repair Flood Mitigation Project along with any and all project documents related to the Solomon Creek Wall Repair Flood Mitigation Project if the application is approved. That's been submitted on behalf of the city. As council knows, the city had a detailed engineering review of the existing deteriorating walls on Solomon Creek. We've already contracted by council's approval for certain areas on the punch list, basically according to the level of need, and so this, if we could, if we receive the grant, this will be used to keep moving down the punch list on other areas to provide the money available to repair some more areas along Solomon Creek.
Counsel, let me speak here for a second. I've thoroughly involved in this. I've been up and down Solomon Creek for years now, and all these things that are here, we need half a million dollars, is definitely going to be used up in no time. This is a danger to the residents down there, and I request you consider this on Thursday's vote. Thank you, Charlie.
Next, authorizing Mayor George C. Brown and City Controller Darren Snyder as the officials to execute all project documents and agreements between the city of Wilkes-Barre and the Commonwealth Financing Authority of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania to request a local, I'm sorry, Luzerne County Local Share Assessment Grant of $150,000 to be used for Luzerne County Historical Society Roof Replacement on the Bishop Memorial Library if the application is approved. And I believe someone's here. No? Yep, I thought.
Did you have the Historical Society one?
It's the glasses.
It's the glasses?
Yeah.
Do we have your name, please?
Mary Walsh.
Mary Walsh. Go ahead, Mary.
Well, over the past few years, the roof has been leaking from time to time, and it always finds a new place to leak, never back to the same place. So this past summer, we had Mark Sobek looked at the roof, found all the places that needed to be repaired, and then he had an abatement company come in and do testing for asbestos, and the whole roof is asbestos. So it's going to cost $150,000 to remove all the asbestos and replace the roof and do all the work that has to be done with that roof. And right now, so many of our documents are really threatened because we have nowhere to keep them except in that building, and we keep covering everything with tarps, so we really do have to repair the roof or replace the roof.
Is this the, sorry, is this the entire roof or is it a partial?
No, the whole.
The entire?
Yeah. I guess once they start finding asbestos, they just get going.
You can't get those historical records wet, that's for sure.
It was leaking 10 years ago, Mary, and I'm glad you're working with Mark Sobek. He's the best. That's good.
Is the total, the total amount of the project is $150,000?
Yes.
So you're asking?
Yes. Well, we've already paid Mark Sobek and people that have done some consulting work, so it's just the replacement of the roof now.
What type of roof is it? It's not a tile roof, is it, or a standard roof?
No. No. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next is authorizing Mayor George C. Brown and City Controller Darren Snyder as the officials to execute all project documents and agreements between the city of Wilkes-Barre and the Commonwealth Financing Authority of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania to request a Luzerne County Local Share Assessment Grant of $500,000 from the Commonwealth Financing Authority of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania to be used for the Blockston Hotel, formerly Luzerne Bank Building, located at 67 Public Square, along with any or other, any or all other project documents related to the Blockston Hotel project if the application is approved. And the proposed developers are present here.
Could you speak your name, please?
Michael Blockston. Does that sound good? What to hear about this? I'm actually not a developer. I'm a Delco native, Delaware County native. I bought this building just under a year ago, September 30th, and I have been meeting with all the leadership that I can find throughout the community, whether it's Lindsay at our chamber, Mayor Brown, Charlie, Senator Flynn, Eddie Day, Congressman Cartwright, Bob Casey's team, the economic development team, and trying to understand what is the most impact we can have and what is the highest and best use for this building that we've acquired. Office is pretty clearly not the highest and best use as we have an ample amount of it, and it's not the use that we need. I have been urged strongly at multiple levels of leadership that hospitality is a gaping hole that needs to be filled. And again, I'm not a developer, so I am going through this process, figuring it out, and pulling in some quite amazing team members. We've engaged, or we've gotten proposals from to engage. The only outsider would be a Philadelphia group, an architecture group, that came up and walked through the building. Sardone Construction has walked through the building. Smith Miller has walked through the building. We've gotten Historical Society to walk through the building, and we've collected quotes of how do we move this to an actionable plan. And we're excited that it can actually become a plan, unlike, I've also learned through this whole process about other projects to provide hospitality into the region that we've, I've heard about have been going on for a decade or so. And I would say the most unique thing about our property is we actually own this property, I own this property, and it's existing, so we're not digging down, we're not building a foundation, it is there, and we're talking about renovation. So the overall cost of this project is a fraction of what the projects that have been going on for many years are. And as of right now, the designs aren't finalized or anything like that, but we're looking at close to 130 rooms in that building once it's completely renovated, which will be fantastic and to, I don't think I can quote Senator Flynn, but when he walked in to the building this morning, if any of you have been there, there is that you walk in and there's a beautiful ceiling that is blocked, your view is blocked, and his response is, wow, wouldn't it be amazing if you could actually see the beautiful architecture that we have here in downtown? So those are my comments. Happy to answer any questions. Again, I'm not familiar with this whole process, as I'm not a developer, but happy to help.
I do.
I do, too.
Go ahead. Certainly, I want to thank you for, and appreciate you investing in the city. Have you done any work since you purchased it?
Tried, and we are. I mean, if you go through the fifth floor, how do I, how do I tell that story? So when we acquired the building, to illustrate, a lot of the rent was collected by hand in check or cash, which is inherently a not sustainable growth metric. So my brother, who actually lives in and manages the building, has done an amazing job of actually implementing software, like being able to pay online. So that was the state of the building when we got it, and Matt has done amazing at, we were just reviewing all the ways in which he's cut expenses, gotten us better energy bills, and done kind of the operation side of things. We've used what little cash we've been able to, to do whatever improvements we can. We were faced with a significant, actually, Matt, was it this building you were in this morning? No, you're at the magistrate. So we faced some serious HVAC issues throughout the whole building, and there was a single contractor that was engaged for six years. And when we took over the building, we ran into consistent issues with units over and over, over again. We have spent way more money than we would like to fix those issues. I don't want to put anything else out there, but we've been trying to maintain and improve the building, and part of the funding that we're talking about today is to increase the security. Look at better security cameras, security system, front doors, back doors, stairwell, fire doors, things like that, things that can make an immediate security presence in the building.
So you're looking to also bring in a restaurant or some other things? What else, what else you looking to bring in?
So the, it would be amazing if we could have a meeting in the lobby of that beautiful building, whether that was sitting down at a restaurant, having a great steak, or that was sitting at a bar, having a drink, that is the intention, and I think that's the feel that we want for that building.
My last question. So it's a, it's a $500,000 grant you're looking for. Suppose Harrisburg doesn't give you that amount, do you have a backup plan?
So the overall project, and this is, the first initial quote coming back from Sardone was seven to 10 million to get the project done. I think it's probably going to come in closer to 12 to do the whole renovation, fixtures, everything.
Okay.
So there is a long series of things that need to happen, and we do have backup plan. I actually have meetings tomorrow for private funding as well. It's, it's definitely not going to be solved by LSA money, but it is absolutely going to help in the process.
All right, and again, I certainly appreciate you investing in the city. Thank you.
No worries. Thank you, John.
I want to echo John. Thank you very much for buying the building, and I'm glad Don and Judy are going to stay in their apartment. He deserves, they deserve to have a lifetime lease for all the work that they have done over the years.
Yeah.
And of course, Don has been a prolific architect in this city for years. I have the original plans of the building, if you have to want to look at them, the 1929, I think there's probably a copy, but I still, I have the, friends are beautiful architect. I used to be the director of marketing for Luzerne Bank, and I'll have to show you all the work I used to do because I would use that ceiling and all the motifs and all our bank branding and stuff. Is the branch going to move out?
Yes.
Okay. And it's, do they have a timetable for moving out, and then you're going to put a restaurant in?
Unbeknownst to me, when I was under contract, they were having a conversation with the previous owners about changing their lease.
Okay.
And we've since come to the conclusion that the highest and best use is not to have a bank there. So their lease runs out in February.
Yeah.
So we're not intending to renew.
Yeah. Now, a restaurant's a great use. When I worked for the bank, we used to do big cocktail parties there for fundraising events, then people would go to the Kirby right afterwards, so.
Amazing.
It's a perfect thing. I'll have to show you some stuff that I've done there, but yeah, great. Thank you. Welcome to Wilkes-Barre.
Yeah, thank you. I will say, I bought this building, this is background, I think you guys are reporters or not, but I bought this building not knowing about Wilkes-Barre. I grew up an hour and a half down the road in Delaware County, and I got to tell you, and Charlie included, there are amazing people here. I am trying to convince my wife to move here. That's an uphill battle. But there are amazing people here, and it's not just this building that we're talking about. I have aerospace companies, you know, one of which has DOD contracts, that we're going to move here from Houston because there's just amazing fertile ground with great ingredients outside of this building, which I think is going to be a huge impact to Wilkes-Barre specifically, but I think there's a regional opportunity that I'm excited about. So I appreciate, again, getting thanked to come here and invest, I mean, that's great. That is good. I appreciate it.
I just have one question. I know that you had mentioned that it's an ongoing project, of course. Do you have a timeline for completion of this project, or is it just?
So having never done this before, I can only go after what a lot of the people around me are saying, and best case scenario is you're looking at six to nine months to go through this whole planning process. So in regards to LSA, we have to come up with all the engineering documents, permits, everything before LSA is even awarded. We should have it all done before we can swing a single hammer. From there, swinging a hammer could only take 12 to 18 months. So we could look at a total timeline of about two years, is what I'm being told, to go from where we are to actually having 130 rooms on the square.
I appreciate what you said, too, about, you know, how there's been several hotel projects within the city that have yet to come to fruition. I think that's something that we're all a little bit sensitive about.
I would be, too.
So anytime we, I mean, I can only speak for myself, anytime I hear about something new, it's like, all right, well, that'd be great, but hopefully it actually happens, you know? But I appreciate, it sounds like you have a solid plan in place, and although you haven't done this before, I'm going out on a limb here, but I trust you more than current developers in our city because it seems like you are putting, you know, proper planning in place in terms of not only just looking for government monies, but also looking at private investment. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. And to clarify the project for everyone's benefit, we're not, these other projects are ground up. I mean, you're breaking ground, it's a shovel project. This is not a shovel project.
Right.
We have a building that exists right there. The real renovation, the real cost is going to go between the fifth floor and the 11th floor, because 12, 13, 14 are already apartments. Minimal renovation needs to go into those, but the other five through seven, or five through 11 is seven floors. That needs to be gutted and done completely. So again, even when you think about the entire project, it is not the whole building that has to get done. It's about half the building that has to get done. So it's not an insurmountable issue to figure out.
I think it would be life-changing for the city, though.
Yeah.
Absolutely, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is authorizing Mayor George C. Brown and City Controller Darren Snyder as the officials to execute all project documents and agreements between the city of Wilkes-Barre and the Commonwealth Financing Authority of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania to request a Luzerne County Local Share Assessment Grant of $180,000 from the Commonwealth Financing Authority of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania to be used for the Wilkes University campus police emergency response upgrades if the application is approved. And Mr. Woods is here for Wilkes.
Your name, please?
Michael Kraswick. I'm the Director of Public Safety and Chief of Police at Wilkes University.
Thank you, John.
A pleasure to be here, and thank you for having me. The reason why I'm here is because we're applying for a grant through the Local Share Grant to upgrade our security. As you know, it is not cheap today to upgrade any type of security. On any given day, we have approximately 3,000 people that visit our campus. We also have various other agencies that come to our university on a daily basis that we host, dignitaries, state, local, county officials that hold meetings there, including various other organizations that request to use our building because of the rooms that we have available. So it's my mission and my goal to keep those people safe, and that's part of the way I do it, is through technology, apps, security cameras. We have 264 security cameras, and we're trying to increase that as well. These cameras and this technology that we have, we have also helped Wilkes-Barre City Police on various occasions to identify individuals that have passed through our campus and around our campus where our security cameras also are to solve crimes and to apprehend criminals. We recently had a security assessment done by the Pennsylvania State Police, and we're awaiting that response. I have met with this trooper on several occasions, and just met with him last week, and some of the things that we need to do is to upgrade our cameras and our technology. There's also something else that we have that's a public address system that needs to be upgraded, that is located in the middle of our campus, and in the event of an active shooter or an emergency, we can make a announcement throughout the campus. It actually reaches over to Rawson Field over in Edredsville, but part of the problem with that is that because where it's located, and maybe it was poor planning many years ago, you're not able to hear that on Ross Street, West Ross Street. And part of this grant that we're requesting is to put a speaker up on top of our student center so that as people are leaving our campus in the event of emergency, or coming onto our campus in the event of emergency, like our students, faculty, and staff, they 'd be able to hear the announcement stating, you know, to leave the campus immediately. So it's a way to communicate information, but mainly it's for the use of cameras, lights, and whatever else the state happens to come back with their assessment to provide security to our campus.
Good question.
Well, I like to hear that because I live on West Ross Street. I do want to commend Wilkes because where I do live, I could say there's not a day goes by that I do not see a Wilkes officer in either a car, bike, or on foot. So they certainly patrol the neighborhood very well. Those yellow, I'm going to call them kiosks, the yellow things with the blue lights, is that part of the upgrade?
Yes.
Those things?
What happens with them is if someone's in need of our department or just needed to make contact with our department in case of emergency, or even non-emergency, they can walk up, hit that button, a camera automatically comes down and has a visual of them. The dispatcher is monitoring that at that time, and then they're able to speak to that individual and find out what's occurring, at the same time the dispatcher is dispatching one of our police officers to that location.
Okay.
Also around our entire campus, which are residence halls, which goes outside, you know, our immediate area where our academic buildings are, on each of those residence halls, there is an emergency button that students, actually any general public can push.
Right.
In order to get response from us. We have a 24-hour, seven-day, week 365-day operation. So when the campus is closed, you know, for breaks and that, we still operate, and our department is still there to provide safety for our community and outside of our community as well. So in the event, you know, the city needs us, we could also assist the city as well. And we work with Wilkes-Barre City Police very well. We also host various events for the state police, the FBI, local county, and various other law enforcement agencies.
Mr. Chairman?
Anything else? House Speaker Barrett?
I'd just like to attest to the fact we've known each other for quite some time. I was in that business that you are. I understand how, it's so easy to sit back and not worry about upgrades. And you know what happens if you let that happen long enough?
Right.
You've reached a point that you're, nothing works.
Right.
So it's just so important to do, and it is very, very expensive, but we need to make sure that this camp, as cheap as Wiki is doing, keep the campus safe, and I commend you for the assessment, too. Sometimes it's difficult to have somebody come in and look at you and tell you what, "Well," but it never hurts another set of eyes look at it. It's going to be interesting to see how that turns out for you, but I do know how proactive you are and Wilkes University is to make this work, and all you have to do is walk into the operations center and talk to the people and look at the equipment that is going on there, and it just makes me feel so much better. So thank you for all that you do to keep your students, and as you alluded to, it's not just the students, it's the visitors and the residents in the area.
Yeah.
Yeah, sometimes it's difficult to take that criticism from another law enforcement agency, but that's how we come, Charlie.
Yeah.
I just have one question, just for curiosity's sake. How many campus police officers do you have?
We have 12 police officers, two of them administrative, one including myself, and a lieutenant that's a support bureau commander. So, you know, over time, because of the cost of putting a police officer on the street and trying to, you know, recruit police officers, because everybody's having a difficult time with that, this is what we use as technology in order to accomplish our goal, and we have dispatchers 24/7 that sit there and monitor those cameras and monitor that, those apps as well.
Am I correct in my understanding that police officers there are fully trained, fully equipped, as well as our, as our police department, as far as the ACT 120 training and also, so you actually have arresting powers for non-resident, or for non-students?
Yeah, the way the law reads it is that we can go 50 yards out of anything that we own. We do not go past the sidewalk, and that's the agreement that we have with Chief Coffee, and that's something that he wants, you know, his officers control. However, if the city does become busy and, you know, they can't, you know, take the call in enough time, we have done it in the past, but my officers are trained just like any municipal police officer in the state of Pennsylvania, including myself, under ACT 120, and they go through the same training. As a matter of fact, we get a lot of training for our officers because we host a lot of training for the state, the FBI. We just hosted a FBI detective school back in the summer. The sheriff's office use our facilities as well, Hazleton has used them, but because of those buildings that we have, we're able to offer that training, so in turn, we get the free training for our officers and, you know, city officers as well.
Thanks.
In the event that they have extra room for us, but it's a great opportunity because we have the buildings, we have the rooms, and we get the free training.
So, so you're talking about cameras, right?
Yes.
How many are you looking at, or would you rather not discuss that, if you'd rather not discuss?
Currently, we have 264 cameras on.
So you're going to replace all of them, or you're going to add to them?
No, that would be over a million dollars. I'd love to replace all of them, too, for technology, but I'm trying to increase the cameras and upgrade the cameras on our campus outside so that it's a benefit not only to us, but to the city officers as well. Like I said, there's a lot of criminal element that walk onto our campus and on our sidewalks that the city then often comes to us. You know, sometimes it's once a week, sometimes it's more, saying, can you please identify this person, person, because we have video, and that video is what they use for court purposes as well. In the past, the city has solved several crimes because of our camera system. So it's a great working relationship that we have city police officers, but it's a benefit to us, and it's a benefit to them as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone? Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we'll authorize Mayor George C. Brown and City Controller Darren Snyder as the officials to execute all project documents and agreements between the city of Wilkes-Barre and the Commonwealth Financing Authority to request a Local Share Assessment Grant of $350,000 from the Commonwealth Financing Authority of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania to be used for the Sherman Street Properties Business Center Roof Replacement if the application is approved. And Sherman Hills.
Not Sherman Hills, no.
State your name, please.
Paul Falzone, managing partner. Thank you for your time. First of all, I'd like to go over the history of this property. We acquired it in 2020, and at that point, the property was vacant for an excess of 10 to 12 years. At that point, we immediately started renovations of the property, and very recently, we've experienced some serious issues with our roof and in the, in the section that's roughly about 50,000 square feet, and it's, we hired a consultant to come in and look at it, Mark Sobek Roofing, and in turn, he concluded that the roof has about reached its life expectancy, and it's going to need some replacement.
Just to stop you there real quick, just so council knows, this is my brother's place on Cole Street, or not Cole Street, Sherman. Just for information.
Correct.
That's been vacant for years?
Formerly my brother's place complex.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you. That was going to be my first question, so.
One of your first questions?
Yeah, where is this place?
Across from Wilkes Barre Academy?
It's okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes, so at this point, we're requesting assistance with the roof replacement. The estimate that was given to us is roughly around 970,000 for the roof replacement, and we're looking obviously for some assistance with doing so, and also as well as want to continue to develop the property to its fullest potential. Thank you. Any questions I can answer if you weren't happy to?
Paul, you said you bought it, it was empty when you bought it in 2020?
Correct.
How many businesses are there, and would you know how many jobs are in there now?
Correct. We're at 20, right now, we have 10 businesses in that complex, and we are at capacity right now, except for just two vacant storefronts that we're looking to develop at some point, but the rest of the facility is full.
And you think, how many people work there? How many jobs do you think?
Um, gosh, there's roughly, in that complex right now, there's about 15 to 20, and out of those, I would say more than half are our employees.
Right, great.
So how long have you operated in the city? Quite some time, right?
I'm sorry, sir?
How long, how long have you?
Our family dates back to 1947. My father started out in the city, and my brother and our children, you know, which are, which we third generation, are going to be continuing operating in the city.
Thank you for that, too.
For sure.
Anything else? House Speaker Barrett?
I'm familiar with the property, even when it was my brother's place and even after that, but it encompasses even more than that going up, up the street, and I know if anybody has not gone by, if you have a chance between now and Thursday, look at the remarkable changes that you've done there, and your family business has been in Wilkes-Barre, you've just been for a long, long time.
Correct.
Not going anywhere, and we appreciate that because it's, to me, it's almost like, I mean, I put you in the same level as a Bosco's or something like that. We don't want you to leave. We want to help you whatever we can, so we do appreciate all that you're doing there to make that part of the city and make the city as a whole better, so employing people to make that part of the city and make the city as a whole better, so employing people within the city. And it would be very easy not to do anything, so I don't want to bother with that, but you've taken that, and I like the signage out front, too. It's really sharp by there. Great job on that. And keep him working hard out there, too.
Looks good.
Thank you.
Anything more? Thank you, Paul.
Thank you. Thank you for your time.
And finally, authorizing Mayor George C. Brown and City Controller Darren Snyder as the officials to execute all project documents and agreements between the City of Wilkes-Barre and the Commonwealth Financing Authority to request a Local Share Assessment grant of $500,000 from the Commonwealth Financing Authority of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania to be used for the Mill Creek Brookside Levy System Rehabilitation Project if the application is approved. Now, the Brookside Levy, just to everybody clear, it's in good shape. We have a provisional, the city's been running under what's called a provisional accreditation for a number of years, probably only, almost about 10. There are some items that the city has to do to upgrade the levy and keep it consistent with accreditation, so this, and we've applied for another grant, would be facilitating those type of modifications of a levy. They're not major, but they're expensive because they involve a levy. So that's what would be done.
Kraszewski, accreditation, what does that really mean? Does it mean like lower insurance, flood insurance from?
Maintain, maintain flood insurance. So if you don't have an accredited levy, then you go into a different zone, so the people that are protected by that levy would have higher insurance and possibly no insurance. So we're not at that point. We have, the city's already got the preliminary accreditation, so we're moving toward the target because these type of circumstances, FEMA, the requests are long-term requests and long-term projects. So the city's been sort of pecking away at this, and now we're down to a point where all the engineering has been completed and the recommendations are in, so there's going to have to be some work, and it's going to be expensive on the levy to make sure it maintains accreditation for everybody on the other side. So it's a very important project for all the constituents up in that area.
Any comments, questions? Thanks, Charlie.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to council presentations. Councilman Brooks?
Yes. Charlie, you know the Oostraat Library in Roiling Mill Hill is moving from Stanton Street over to Hazel. Do you think it's possible we can get a crosswalk across? It would be Forest to, well, that little Albert, Philbert Street is a little alley that comes down by Angelo's Pizza there.
Forest over?
Yeah, across, over Hazel.
Yeah.
Yeah, and maybe some signage or something. I mean, we had a neighborhood meeting, and people are concerned, you know how people are just concerned with safety for kids and things like that, but I may think it's a good idea that the library's moved there.
I don't think it's a state, but to me, it's an hour weekend, so that's really quiet. And then just off of Forest, where we said, like, it's just.
Right, something like that. And then 76 Riverside Drive, high grass and weeds. And then there's a pothole at McGaragher and Grove, you know where Tom Colless lives, right by the, how McGaragher?
By the park.
Yeah, by the park. There's a pothole there.
Grove and.
McGaragher, it's on McGaragher, just before you come to Grove. And then would you know if the LCTA is over here on Pennsylvania Avenue, are they going to replace the trees that they knocked down? Do you know?
I don't believe they are. My memory was, it was back about, you know, we were first doing the project about three years ago, I think for two and a half years ago. I remember being in a bunker, so I do remember, so it was a while ago. The, they had to take the trees down, they couldn't replant because there is a potential reason. You can't have trees or any tree area because of that's a potential reason. That's what I remember when we were talking about, when they first said they had to take them out. Because we asked about it.
All right. Okay.
That's my understanding.
Got it. Thank you, sir. Nothing else?
Councilman Marconi?
Yeah, I just have a couple for Charlie. So North Washington Street was just paved and it's beautiful. Couple days ago, there was a huge water main break. I don't know if you're aware of that. Okay, well.
Fire chief who drives home.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. It needs to be patched up.
We, DPW, they have to let it.
Let it settle.
But there's been a big bunch of demons going back. You're well aware of it.
Okay, so am I. I was well aware of it real fast. Potholes, again, at the railroad tracks, Charlie, on North Main and Johnson. I know it's, we get there, you guys get there, you know, the guys get there, they actually fill it what they could. It does a great job. It really, really helps whenever they're able to. And I know, they've done it several times for me. And then finally, I had a resident call me from Cypress Street. I went down yesterday, it's off of West Chestnut. There's three large pine trees, and the pine trees appear to be on our property, and the pine trees, they're growing over on this residence, actually over her fence. Is there, we can get down to have DPW just check it out and see if we can maybe just trim that up a little bit. I'll send you photos, I have photos, too. Yeah, if we can do that.
Give me a call tomorrow, I'll find out.
What was that?
Give me a call tomorrow, and I'll find out.
Okay, okay. All right. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Councilwoman, good work.
Yeah, a few things. First, has there been, has there been any news on Butch's position on, like, filling it at any point, especially before the winter?
Well, there's not, it's not going to be a Butch's position. There are various, Butch, for all the years, kept picking up additional duties. So part of that's already been worked out. We're waiting for the union to review a proposed job description, job nature that's more truncated but directed at DPW. I'd say we're about 90% there, but it's a union discussion with the council. I'm very worried.
And then, same thing on Empire Street with the Vega trucks? I think that's the name of it.
Yeah, we've talked to them a couple times, they've been less than a lot of the time. So I'll try to keep on topic. There's not enough that I can do to take their life over, help the street now. I'll try to.
Okay. And then, so the section of Lehigh where I live, if you remember, I believe it was last year, that was turned to a one-way street to match the rest of Lehigh. It's the top of Lehigh behind Allied Services there. I'm seeing a lot of cars going the wrong way still, but then also more recently, I've noticed, I believe it was Waste Management and another landscaping company that's been going down the wrong way to get to Mayflower Crossings there. And obviously, I mean, it's dangerous if a car goes down it the wrong way, but it's exceptionally dangerous if a large truck goes down it the wrong way. So I'm not sure, maybe better signage, or, I mean, there's a one-way sign there, but...
I'll ask somebody to.
Okay. And then, the water issue on East North Hampton Street, I'm trying to get ahead of this before the winter again, I know that that was the main of my existence and yours. Has there been any updates on that from PennDOT recently?
I don't know, I'll check.
Okay. I know Butch.
I know they fixed the road, but they didn't.
Fix the water issue.
Right, in my understanding, every time we ask about it, it's, it's, it's like a huge project and we can't access it, like a stream or something. We get various questions of it, but it never gets resolved.
No, I mean, I'm sure it is a huge project, but it's a safety issue.
The road gets paved.
Right.
The resolution doesn't.
No. Well, yeah, and as you know, especially in the wintertime, it's terrible. And then, the shade tree commission, I know that, Tony, you were working on that, I know that's kind of been, you know, your baby. But I've been doing a lot of walking around the city streets lately with my day job, and I dread walking on streets where there's no trees because of the, it's, it's hor, it's honestly, it's terrible. Has there been any movement on the shade tree commission, or anything that we can do to get more trees planted throughout the city?
Well, we have, we planted some trees, and we have a request for a grant out for a number of trees in there, so location, some of them are going up on the park, the Triangle Park, that there's no trees up there, and some of them are going in various other park areas. The question of putting them in tree lawns and things like that is very problematic, very expensive, usually. So we're aware of it. Mayor hasn't made any decision on reconstituting, placing additional people on there.
Okay.
Mission.
Okay. I know it sounds like such a small issue, but truly, it's, oh my goodness, it's such a difference walking in Wilkes-Barre compared to a place like Kingston or something where there's lots of shade, and I wish people would realize the benefits of having trees around their house. And Cole Street. Bill, I know this is your district, but I'm sure you get the same complaints I do about people speeding down Cole Street. And I think that goes back to the way that Cole Street, the redesign was, it was designed like a highway, and it shouldn't have been. So I was over in Kingston the other day, and I was going down Market Street, and I noticed that they had a cruiser parked in the middle of Market Street to slow traffic down. Is that something that we would be able to do on Cole Street?
I'll check.
Okay. And that's all I have for now. Thank you.
Councilman Barrett, anything today?
Last week, I sent some information to Charlie. 2729 Hurley Street, it's a double block, it's empty. It's been empty for quite some time. I can resend it to you if you'd like.
No, I don't.
Okay, you're welcome. But we all have these properties in our district. People own them, but they don't do anything. They board up the windows and they walk away. And they're a source of problems with rodents, grass, vagrants, everything else you can imagine. And obviously, an ice sore and a safety hazard, fire hazard and everything. Back in 2018, we passed an ordinance to deal with vacant properties. Registration, as you may recall, registration of properties, requiring if you've got a vacant property longer than a certain period of time, and I believe it's six months, you're required to register it with the city and do certain things. Yeah, I have it here, I have copies here for everybody. But these kind of properties that, this one on Hurley Street, and there's a, I can name 12 others, right off the top of my head, that are like that, board up the windows and walk away without any responsibility. And they're difficult when the taxes are kept up to some extent, and they're nuisance for us because we've got to go cut the grass and everything, and certainly a problem for the residents of the area. Now, looking at this ordinance, as you may recall, just the, one of the highlights is that you just can't board up windows and leave them that way. John on George Avenue, the bank on George Avenue, Paul, and the other, been there 15 years, boarded up. This says you either get a permit, fix it, repair it, sell it, or take it down, whatever you have to do. You just can't let it sit there. And some of these properties are perfect, perfect match for why we passed this particular ordinance back in 2018. It's a problem, I understand, it's the enforcement. Where do we find the people to do these types of things? To go after these vacant properties and say, listen, you're in violation of this particular ordinance, you just can't walk away, put pieces of plywood in the window and leave it like that. And I know you probably all think that I've got those properties, too, because I've got several of them as well. So take a look at this ordinance, I'll pass it back out just to refresh your memory and see, I'm going to see if there's something that we can do, and I'm going to ask Charlie and maybe our legal office to see if we can come up with a way. It may be somewhat labor-intensive in the beginning, but I think it's a great tool to come back at these people that just walk away. Just walk away from them, leave them there, because there are penalties. There are very specific penalties in here, and very specifics about what you need to do. You need to register the property with us and keep it registered with us, and within certain periods of time, you need to do something with it, other than just walk away from it, leave it there. So I'm going to take a look at it in your free time, maybe tonight, 11 o'clock, looking for something to help you go to sleep, take a look at it. It's a little bit lengthy, but you're going to see, you're going to see that it applies to a lot of properties that are in your particular district, and I know I have, too.
Oh, yeah. You have copies, right?
Yeah, I have copies here for everybody.
Bill, did we, Bill?
We all passed that.
Wasn't there a fee, too?
There is a fee to register. I mean, we can, I'm not so much concerned about the fee, I'm concerned about these problem properties just standing there, and nobody doing anything about it. They're like, oh, just board up the windows and walk away. Well, according to this, you can't. You can't just board up the windows and walk away, or board up the doors and do nothing. So take a look at it, see what you think.
DPW workers end up helping out.
Yeah, we have to maintain them. Sure. This way, you've got to register, just like a rental property registration, this is the same thing, this is vacant property registration. And I don't think we've done enough with it. It's a great tool, in my mind, to tax vacant properties. And I think we should try it. I think we should try it and see how it works with these properties. But anyway, let me know what you think. And that's it.
Thank you. I just want to commend the mayor and Charlie McCormick. Every time I put something in again, it gets done that day, the next day, I've been a real pain this past week to Charlie and Mayor Brown. But everything gets done so quick. I put one in, a request this morning, and by early afternoon, owner was already on it. And I couldn't, I couldn't believe that that happened that quick. But I do want to recommend and thank the administration and Charlie and the guys in DPW and code enforcement. The other thing is to counsel, I forgot to bring my report from the sanitary authority. It's at home on my kitchen table, so if you want to stop by. No, I'll bring it Thursday.
We'll see you Thursday.
Stop. Come by, be there tomorrow.